It's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Stearns County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, June 5th. Meeting order. We'll call will show that all Commissioners are present. Please join me in the Pledgeable Agents.
The Pledgeable Agents do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we speak. One nation under God, indivisible, with other p and justice for all.
First item is the Public Access Forum. I do believe we have someone here for the Public Access Forum. Welcome back, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. George Rendalob, now a Board Member of the Stearns County History Museum, and I would like to introduce you to our new Executive Director, Carrie Essig, and she'd like to just spend a minute or two and kind of tell you briefly some of the things that we hope to be accomplishing in the next year or so. Again, on behalf of the History Museum Board, we want to thank the County Board for your continued support of the History Museum, and I think that in the next couple of years, you're going to be very proud of some of the things that we do. So without any further ado, I'll introduce you to Carrie Essig, our new Executive Director.
Thank you, George. Good morning. I just want to very briefly say thank you so much to the county for all of the funding that they have provided over the years for the Stearns History Museum. Thank you to Jeff and Commissioner Mergan and Commissioner Lenzmeyer for their support of us and for their service in our district and also on our board. I just wanted to introduce myself, let you know a little bit about me, and let you know a little bit about what we're doing. Many of you, and I know you've all been invited to the Hard Hat Tour in a couple of weeks. The museum's under construction. We're on the move this summer, and we are putting in a new fire suppression system. It's something that was planned in the 80s, but was determined it didn't need to be put in. We have a priceless collection of artifacts. We've got documents dating back to the early 1800s. We have students who are also very precious to all of us who come into the museum on a regular basis, and we want to make sure that our guests, our staff, and of course, our artifacts are protected with a new fire suppression system. Mike and Carol Helgerson were very gracious in offering a $75,000 challenge match for this particular project, and I'm happy to report that in under two months, we met the match. We've actually managed to generate even a little bit more revenue, which is going to help sweep up the project. It was a $150,000 project altogether. And that construction is going on as we speak. There's dumpsters out in front of the museum, and every single ceiling in the museum is torn out right now. So one of the things that the Museum Board asked me to address was the percentage of the budget that the County Commissioners and that the county provides for us every year, and I just wanted to let you know that we have a plan in place to reduce that percentage and continue to develop our membership. We're going to start a membership campaign in the fall when the construction is finished, and we are going to continue to increase our annual revenue through a number of different campaigns. So I just wanted, again, to say thank you to let you know that I've got a plan. I'd be more than happy to, at some time in the future, address those plans in more detail and welcome you all to the museum anytime you'd like to come over and meet with me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there anyone else here for the Public Access Forum to address items that are not on today's agenda?
Good morning. My name is James Mahalik. I live on White Oak Road in Rockville. I'm here to talk about the Brian Brophy conditional use permit. That will be before the Planning Commission in two weeks and then most likely before this Board shortly thereafter. First of all, I am opposed to it, as are nearly all of my neighbors that I've spoken with, but that's not what I'm here to discuss. My wife has been in discussions with Chuck Nisko at the Department of Natural Resources, and he's been talking to Mr. Brophy about trying to find other options for his trap range other than up against the residential area. There are two hunting preserves nearby. One of them is Sand Pines, which is north of Collegeville, and the other one is Gold Metals, which is north of Richmond Cold Springs area. And what Mr. Nisko was suggesting is getting Mr. Brophy and the operators of those ranges together to see if something could be worked out. But what's needed is someone to facilitate that, to get those parties together with possibly even a third-party neutral who is not, doesn't have a vested interest in the outcome, to see if there is an option that will not leave the area with a lot of bad blood, no matter, sorry, wrong term, nasty, nasty feelings, however the results may turn out. So what I'm asking is if someone from the Board or environmental, someone with more authority than an average citizen like myself with a vested interest could help facilitate that and get discussions going, and time is critical because it is two weeks until it comes before the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Members, anything as to where you should be referred to? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak?
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Casey Beaumont, 8617 White Oak Road. I'm a neighbor of Jim's. I'm here also to speak about the upcoming Planning Commission, Commission meeting on the 20th. I do believe there's been some underhanded dealing going on. There was a DNR grant approval for $25,000 received by Mr. Brophy in October 2017. He has declined to bring that up at any of these meetings, and with the principal reason that he wants to have his leather manufacturing facility is to facilitate his shooting range. And there's almost unanimous opposition in the neighborhood to this proposal. To that end, folks are writing to the Governor. Your email boxes are possibly about to get bombarded. Fair warning, there's very heavy opposition to this, and as Jim alluded to, we are attempting to meet with Mr. Brophy and help him understand the level of disagreement with his proposal and try to offer him some outs, because we don't want him to just be saddled with a property that doesn't work. He really needs to move it to another location, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak before, on the Public Access Forum? Anyone else for the Public Access Forum? Third time, anyone for the Public Access Forum? Seeing no one, we'll go to the Consent Agenda, Board Members.
Mr. Chair, just to make you aware, I don't know if you are aware, that is up for a separate public hearing on July 20th, or June 20th, this agenda item. It's a separate planning meeting.
Oh, there's a process, for sure.
Yeah, okay, just so that you know that.
Consent Agenda, Board Members?
I'll move the Consent Agenda.
It's moved. Is there a second?
I can second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we will recess the regular Board meeting and conduct the Human Services Board meeting. We have Melissa Huberty here.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator, and I have just one item on the Consent Agenda this morning, and it's item number C1, pages 194 through 196. Wondering if you have any questions?
Do we have any sort of a motion?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We are up to item D, which is a public hearing scheduled for 9:10. Opposed tax abatements. Tracy Ryan?
That's me. I'd also like to introduce the new Economic Development Director and Planning Director for the City of Melrose, Lisa Atkinson.
Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you.
We appreciate the time. For the County Board, I'll be brief. As you may be aware, in September of 19, excuse me, 2016, the City of Melrose suffered a significant fire in their downtown referred to as the 400 Black Fire. The city lost about 9,000 square feet of commercial space and about 12 multifamily housing units. The city's been working really hard to try and recover from that fire. As a part of that, the city successfully lobbied the Legislature for some special funding and received approximately $1.4 million to help remediate the fire damage and rebuild businesses from that fire. The city to date has, has been successful in helping to replace the primary building, the Bindorf Building, who bought another property in Melrose and reestablished their business. And then the other, they've been working very hard to address the replacement of commercial space and the multifamily units on the former craft site in Melrose. Unfortunately, this legislation is sunsetting at the end of the month, and we haven't got our details put together on that project. So it's likely that the city will move forward and, you know, relobby the Legislature to continue that funding. As a part of the remediation, the funds that were awarded from the Legislature, there was about $99,000 that was directly allocated to Stearns County to help remediate fire damage. And the way that the Legislature looked at doing that, or asked the city to do that, is they would use those funds to reimburse the county for any tax abatement assistance that they provided. So that brings us to the public hearing today. Jim and Elizabeth Elias own the property that was immediately adjacent to the source of the fire, suffered significant damage. The city has used about $85,000 of the legislative funds to help them, you know, button up their building and kind of bring them back to, or secure the outside, and then insurance proceeds will help them to continue renovating the property. As a part of, of the total package, the city has approved an agreement whereby they will provide tax abatement of $15,000 to help them make some exterior, further exterior improvements, and that is what the assistance from the county is for as well, is to provide $11,000 of tax abatement assistance for the Elias's to restore their commercial, one of the commercial spaces on the main level and some exterior improvements. This is unique, so the way that these legislative dollars will work for the county, and this does fall outside of your tax abatement policy. We met with your Tax Abatement Committee, and while this wouldn't fit in with your standard policy, any tax abatement approved by the county will be reimbursed in full upfront by the State of Minnesota through these special legislative funds. So that's kind of where we're at right now, and I'll leave it for questions.
We have a public hearing, right?
Yes. Need you open the room?
Is there any, that's pretty much it? Okay. At this point, we will open the public hearing. The public hearing is open. Are there questions from the Board? Is there anyone to speak on this, other than the people already there? Anyone to speak? Anyone to speak? Okay. So with what you're proposing here, the county will be totally reimbursed?
Correct.
Okay, so you're not asking for anything from the county?
Correct. Total amount of assists, you know, technically, you're going to be asked to approve a tax abatement resolution and a tax abatement agreement following the closure of the hearing. The assistance would be $11,000, maximum of $11,000 of assistance with a maximum term of 10 years. As soon as you approve those agreements, the City of Melrose will help the county process the reimbursement request through the Department of Public Safety, and you'll be reimbursed for that $11,000 upfront. Your payments to Elias will continue, like I say, over those 10 years.
Okay. Board Members? Mr. Merrick?
Is there one of our Board Members that's on the abatement committee, or somebody from administration?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we might not recall, but we had, we had, we discussed this with our abatement committee months ago, in fact, maybe even as long as a year ago, when the grant was first obtained by the City of Melrose, and so we have reviewed it. And as Tracy said, this would not normally fit our policy, but since we're being totally reimbursed, it seems that, you know, there's no reason not to do it.
Okay. Mr. Lenzmeyer?
Dr. Willey, do the other jurisdictions then have to go through the same process that we do, or is this just the county function?
Commissioner, this is just the county's portion of the taxes.
Yeah.
And so the City of Melrose, I think, has already gone through the abatement process for what, for what they will be abating.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're the last one?
Yep.
There's more dollars there if, if, if you can cause an abatement to benefit some of the other properties that are some of the parts of the project, but this is the only portion that we've been asked to approve to date.
Okay.
The school is not a part of this.
Right. The school was not included in the legislation, and so we did not ask them.
Any other discussion?
I'll move approval of the recommended action.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been seconded. Any further discussion?
I, I, I don't see any drawback. Why, why wouldn't you not approve it?
Neither did the abatement committee. No reason to, to say no.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now up to item E.
That's Kathy Mahalich.
Kathy Mahalich. Economic Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy Mahalich, Economic Development Director for the City of St. Cloud. I am here this morning to request a $10,000 contribution from Stearns County towards a project that the City of St. Cloud is accessing in the form of federal EDA. That's Federal Economic Development Administration Grants that are available to us as a result of the announcement at the end of January earlier this year of Electrolux's closure of their manufacturing plant here in St. Cloud. The plant currently employs nearly 900 workers, and many of them live in Stearns County. In fact, over 50% live in Stearns County. And that closure is, is set to take place at the end of 2019, and the company has given us some forewarning on that, but at the same time, that presents a number of challenges, and it gives us frankly, the opportunity and timeframe to assess what those impacts are going to be to the community from that displaced workforce of 900 people, as well as what other community impacts are in place. I've outlined for you in the staff report some of the impacts, particularly to Stearns County. Again, Electrolux represents the county's third-largest private employer after Centra Care and Pilgrim's Pride, and even Pilgrim's Pride has, has taken a hit over the last couple of years. Over 500 Electrolux employees live in Stearns County. The plant, of course, is located in the heart of St. Cloud, and Stearns County's portion of the annual property tax there is about $86,000. I've made some bullet points with regards to the economic impact study that was conducted earlier this year by St. Cloud State University and University of Minnesota Extension Office about some of the, the unique impacts and challenges of, of this particular project. Largely, there's no other appliance manufacturing facility in the state of Minnesota, much less in our central Minnesota region, and therefore, there's a limited amount of related industries, and that's why we really want to take a deep dive look at target industries in our central Minnesota communities, and also a better workforce profile so that we can better attract those, those targeted companies that are proven to be sustainable going forward and attract them back to this area. Another uniqueness to this project and impact is the age level and education level of many of the workers. You've probably heard or seen that that is one of the unique challenges because of the longevity with this company. Over half of the company's workforce is age 50 or older, and we know there are a number of impacts there. As a result of understanding some of the, the impacts, Mayor Kleis of St. Cloud did call together a group of stake, community stakeholders called his Economic Recovery Team, and included the Chamber, Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, the University, and the College, and Workforce Center, and talked about what some of the potential resources might be to address these, these impacts, and one of those is federal EDA funding. Partly due to the result of having that comprehensive economic development strategy in place that was just recently adopted at the end of last year, I believe it was, in that collaboration with the four counties, this allows us eligibility to apply for federal EDA dollars up to 50%. We're hopeful of their potential match up to 80%, and as a result, we are leading an application for a project called an Economic Recovery Coordinator. We are looking to contract with a person for a two-year period who has some experience in working in these recovery efforts where there's a large economic impact and disruption to a community and a region. I've outlined for you some of the primary objectives of that project and that two-year project. Again, one of them is assessing the target industries and workforce profiles so we know what we're marketing to, and I think one of the other most important components is the, the business development side. We're proposing an aggressive business retention expansion program that really targets a lot of the existing companies in the St. Cloud area that are headquartered outside of Minnesota. This has been a group that's been very difficult for the Chamber and GSDC to reach because of limited resources. With the federal EDA funds, we can, we have budgeted for some travel dollars to be able to make contact and build relationships with those companies. We've identified at least 12 of the City of St. Cloud's largest employers that are headquartered out of state, and it's a pretty significant impact if we don't have relationships with those decision-makers. Another key is working with the University and College on a workforce training program, and then also of interest to you is the reuse and redevelopment of the property. Their property encompasses about a million square feet and 40 acres right in the heart of St. Cloud, and so we want to continue conversations with the company about their intentions with the property and also look at opportunities through this workforce and industry analysis to maybe make a really good match for who could move in and the potential reuse of that property. potential reuse of that property. The request of Sherburne County, or excuse me, Stearns County today is ten thousand dollars to leverage other matching sources that we've identified. Those matching sources include a significant contribution, and I'll just back up by saying, Mayor Kleis was not interested in proceeding with these, with this application without a significant contribution from the company. And so that was our first request, and the company has come back with a verbal commitment of fifty thousand dollars, which according to federal EDA is, is, is very significant. They rarely see this in cases. And then we have ten thousand dollar increments from a variety of public-private sources, the city economic development office, Stearns County, Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, Excel, Initiative Foundation, Central Minnesota Community Foundation, and Centra Care, and those requests are all in process at this, at the same time as, as our request to Stearns County. Timing wise, we have a proposal already into federal EDA. It's a two-step application process. We're hopeful of a final application being submitted by the end of this month, if not the first part of next month. It really depends on their timing and approval, and we really hope to have this, this, this Economic Recovery Coordinator in place as soon as possible before the end of summer to mitigate the timeframe that we have remaining available on this project. Again, the, the closure is set for end of two thousand nineteen, and we have some limited time to get our ducks in a row. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I will also approach the DAS with some additional information on a breakdown of, of the, the location of employees by community and the project budget.
Mr. Natch?
Yeah, good morning. Do you have any current statistics, like how many are still employed there?
Well, the information I have was conducted by the state of Minnesota Economic Development, Department of Employment and Economic Development, as part of their initiating a rapid response. They surveyed all of the employees, they, they received a response of seven hundred twenty, I believe it was, and so that's the most recent information we have. It was about a month ago.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Persky.
Kathy, thank you first of all for your work on this. You know, this is not good news. It's a problem, and, you know, I'm glad we're at least trying to be proactive and do something about it now. You know, we had a similar situation with the loss of those jobs up in Sartell when we lost the mill, and that presents a great challenge. And of course, a lot of people are wondering where their life will go, and so also there's, also the emotional side of that as well. We're looking at about nine hundred employees that were there at Electrolux, but also associated businesses. They're, they're making the assumption of about how many other jobs would be lost. Do you, do you have that number?
Yeah, and in your, in the staff report, I've indicated one of the bullet points from that economic impact analysis by St. Cloud State and University of Minnesota Extension that the loss of eight hundred and sixty jobs at the freezer manufacturing plant will affect an estimated eighteen hundred jobs in Stearns, Sherburne, and Benton Counties. So that is the multiplier effect of those jobs.
Yeah, and, and so obviously, that's not good news either. One thing, and I don't know if you've been made aware of, also the jobs that are potentially lost from Wacosa, because the folks out at Wacosa have been doing some, you know, special needs or work out there with their workforce, and there too, those folks will lose that opportunity, and, and that's a need we have as well, so we'll be looking for a placement for those folks, so.
Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, and thank you Kathy for your presentation. I would like Mike to kind of go over the SEDS program. I think this is a classic example of something, of a vehicle that's out there that we can use, so can you just give a little background for anybody that's listening?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, Kathy could do, could do it. She was also involved, but each, each of the four counties, right, Benton, Sherburne, and Stearns, entered into a process, oh golly, two years ago, maybe even a little more than that, to create a comprehensive economic development strategy, which is a requirement of the federal EDA to, to, for municipalities to be eligible for, for these federal EDA grants. And so we went through that process and created that comprehensive economic development strategy, or SEDS, and you all, you, this county board and the other county boards approved that document and that plan last fall, and since that time then, each county board again has entered into a joint powers agreement to create an economic development, I guess I'll call it Economic Development Authority, it's not technically that, it's a joint powers agreement, but it's, it's to continue to meet the federal EDA requirements to be eligible for grants in the future, and so this is, this is a perfect example of something that would not have otherwise been able to be applied for and obtained, and I think this, the likelihood of success in this grant is high. We also have some other communities in Stearns County and in the, in the other three counties that are contemplating submitting grants through other federal EDA programs.
Okay, thank you. So this is the first time that we're using this vehicle?
Yes, for, for many, many years. I mean, we've, this, this area, this region has struggled to have some kind of SEDS in place so that they can be eligible for these types of grants for many years.
And the funds would come from our reserve fund?
We, yes, and I, I think I wrote in the cover memo that it could, that this could easily come from our reserve. I'll also check the contingencies. We haven't used our contingency yet this year, so that would, that would be another likely source, so one of those two is where we would take it from.
Thank you. The only other comment that I have is that, you know, there's a lot of collaboration going on with the area counties, and also with the Workforce Center in St. Cloud with, with Career Solutions, Tammy, Tammy Bury is the executive director, and Commissioner Lenzmeyer and I both serve on that board, and I know there's been all kinds of efforts from, from that venue as well, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Just, Mr. Chair, one last thing. Kathy, I think these ten thousand dollar requests are based on an applicant, or based on a grant that would be fifty percent, fifty percent funded, is that right? And there is a chance that we could, you could get eighty percent funded?
Correct. There's, there's potential for eighty percent funding, we're hopeful of that, but no guarantee. In order to make the application, we have to prove at least fifty percent available match.
So we could be in for a little lesson.
Potentially, yes, hopeful.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
I guess, considering my profession, I'm wondering in the grand scope of things, is the fact that this is one of the oldest, if not the oldest industrial site in central Minnesota? Does contamination become an issue for some of this stuff? Is there, is there going to be any type of study required at some point as we get into the loose ends of the programming that you're trying to put together?
Chair and Commissioners, in response to that question about any potential contamination, it's all suspect right now. Certainly, we all are aware of local history with regards to that, that aged facility, and we, the city has the same potential concerns, but really, the negotiations are going to be driven by the company itself and what their timing is for the reuse, and, and they're interested in redevelopment of that property, so our goal right now is just to continue to engage the company in conversations and letting them know of our, of our continued interest in what happens with that property, and when they're prepared to, to work with us on that, we'll look at accessing any available resources to address potential environmental issues certainly, but at this time, it's suspect, nothing's been proven.
Anyone else? I got, I have a question for Commissioner Persky right now. When the Sartell mill fire there, did, was Sartell, did they come and ask for a contribution from the county to mitigate the negative impacts, or did they receive such a contribution?
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't think the county was involved there. However, there was a lot of work with deed through that.
Yeah, I don't, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, I don't think there was any federal grants applied for at that time either, but.
And we just talked to Melrose, and I think Melrose, their negative impact with that fire was proportionally probably a lot greater. And if we're going to contribute this ten thousand, I think they should also be given that opportunity. So where does this end? Mr. Merrick?
Yeah, the, the SEDS program was not in effect at either of those, either the, the Melrose that you talk about or the Sartell, but this program is in place now, and so it's a vehicle that can be used now and into the future.
But would, would Stearns County get reimbursed for this ten thousand?
Commissioners, no, not through this, not through this proposal, it's a matching contribution.
I, I cannot support it then, under the same, because the same question was asked of the Melrose people.
If I may, Commissioners and Chair, the, the federal EDA Economic Adjustment Assistance Program, of which we're applying under, is the same program that is used under natural disasters when they strike across the United States, and communities can access those for natural disasters in addition to economic, major economic disruptions like this. The, the minimum number of jobs that need to be displaced is one hundred, so Verso certainly could have applied. I understand federal EDA did offer to come at the aid right away, and no application was proceeded, I'm not, not sure why. One of the things is, one of the prerequisites, of course, is having that SEDS in place. Number two is, is either being able to qualify based off of the distressed economic conditions of, of the county or community by itself, of which St. Cloud has, has struggled over the years. We've just been a little bit above their bar to be able to qualify, but when a, a major layoff and plant closure happens of one hundred or more, we have a twelve-month window to apply as an, as an emergency economic disruption. And so that's, that's where this is coming into play. It would certainly be eligible to any of the communities in the four county regions should continued layoffs or plant closures of, of this significance, one hundred or more, occur. It does require the community to actually proceed with an application, so it may certainly be something that, that Melrose may, and other communities may want to look at. In fact, when we were doing the research about this, it was very hard to find other Minnesota communities that have accessed this program under this type of situation where for a plant closure, there's some examples up on the Arrowhead region with the, the paper mills and the closures there, so we are really setting the standard, and, and this will be one of the first projects, and we want it to be successful, so we, we appreciate your support in this effort.
Mr. Natch?
Yes, Kathy, just another question on, do you know what the average hourly wage or income?
Sixteen or something like that.
Salary?
Oh, it was around, it's between thirteen to fifteen dollars per hour in, in the wage, and I'm happy to share with you a copy of the economic impact analysis that was conducted. It's a lot of interesting information in, in outlining what the unique challenges of the project are, but it's between thirteen to fifteen dollars.
Okay, thank you for that. And I kind of had this first, the same reservations that Commissioner Mergan did, but I guess after, you know, you expounded on it more, and Electrolux indicated they would contribute at least fifty thousand, you know, they're contributing quite a bit considering they're going to have a lot, large expense once that building sits empty. The other thing, you know, just quick calculation, there's like seventy-nine percent of those that answered your survey here, if I have this right, are Stearns County residents, and granted, there are a lot of job openings, you know, out there so that a lot of these people would probably merge into, but I, I guess at this point, you know, it's something I could support based on the realistic minimal investment the county's going to make with hopefully a large return in the end.
Mr. Persky?
Yeah, I, I would just like to respond to that too. Jeff, I don't, I don't want to throw ten thousand, I don't want to throw ten thousand dollars just to the wind either, but when I take a look at perhaps the job replacement, redevelopment, you know, perhaps getting a new business in there quicker, you know, that's an investment too that would bring those people back to being employed and bringing tax dollars back in, so I will support it as well.
Is there any other discussion? Anyone else? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the recommended action, and I'd like the minutes to reflect some of the background that we've been talking about, the SEDS program and all of that, and how this, how this comes in, so, in some summary-type fashion. Anyhow, I move approval of the recommended action.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Name? Neil Rocco? Rocco?
Aye.
Mr. Persky?
Aye.
Mr. Natch?
Aye.
Mr. Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Chair Mergan?
Name. Motion passes.
Thank you.
We are up to item F, Public Works. Jody Tyke here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For my first item today, I am asking the county board to authorize the auditor, treasurer, and county administrator to award bids for CP zero seven four dash zero one eight dash zero three zero, and that's the construction of the right turn lane and the bypass lane along County Road seventy-four at the New Tech High School entrance. We do open bids this Thursday. Next board meeting, I believe, is June twenty-sixth. We are up against DNR exclusionary dates for working in the stream that goes through the project area that I believe starts on September fifteenth. This is a project we're partnering with the city of St. Cloud, and they have some city utilities to do, so in order to keep things moving on this project, I would like the board to authorize the administrator and auditor, treasurer to award this, and then I will bring it back at the next board meeting for the board to acknowledge that award.
Board members?
I'll move the recommended action.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Merrick?
The bypass lane, that would be for southbound traffic.
Correct, to go around left turning traffic going into the school.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For my next item, I'm asking the county board to approve and authorize final payment for SAP zero seven three dash six oh two dash oh four seven and zero seven three dash six five oh dash oh one one, and these are the County Road Two and Fifty improvements, the reconstruction in the city of Coal Springs that took place a couple of years ago. You'll notice there is a nine point, nine and a quarter percent overrun. That overrun can be attributed to, we did have a small error in our Batumus calculations. We did add battery backup systems on all the signals in Coal Springs, the majority of which was the city of, or MinDOT's cost, and the city of Coal Springs is also participating in that, and then we did find some contaminated soils. So the final contract value is four million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. More than half of that is the city of Coal Springs' costs, but I'm asking the board to approve and authorize that final payment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, Jody, when, when you show the overrun, that's the county portions of the?
That's the total overrun. So a portion of that is the city of Coal Springs, a portion is MinDOT's with those added battery backup signals, and then a portion is, of course, ours.
And the county's the fiscal agent, so that's why it shows up as a whole?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
My next item is informational only. I did want to give the county board an update on our County Road seventy-five resurfacing that is planned for two thousand and eighteen. As you're aware, this is a federal project. With a federal project comes several levels of approval. This entire project was supposed to be constructed in two thousand and eighteen. We still don't have authorization to advertise for bids. Best case scenario, we would receive that on Monday, we would be looking at a July bid opening, probably two weeks before we would have authorization to award the contract, so we would be looking at starting construction, best case scenario, in August. This is a significant project, it's just under six miles of resurfacing. We've got some minor grading work to do at a few of the intersections and some median crossover work. The project was originally set up in three phases. The first phase was all that prep work, the median crossover work, the grading work, setting up the temporary signals for the traffic shifts, and then the second phase was resurfacing the eastbound lanes, and the third phase was resurfacing the westbound lanes. A portion of this within the city of White Park is also supposed to be done in concrete. With the late start that we have, we don't want to disrupt up to thirty thousand vehicles a day for two consecutive construction seasons, including the entire winter, so our plan at the highway department is to have the contractor complete Phase One this construction season, so there would be some minor lane this construction season. So there would be some minor lane closures, but it would not be for the entire stretch. Within Phase 1, they would construct those median crossovers, so we would be prepared to do just resurfacing and have it all completed in relatively quick fashion as soon as road restrictions are lifted in 2019. I know this is a pretty high-profile project just because of the traffic it serves, but based on the several levels of federal approval, which included STIP amendment, without using too many acronyms, it's the overall federal program. And because some work got added, even though we are not asking for additional federal money, and this project is within the St. Cloud APO planning area, there was a 30-day public comment period that was tacked on to that overall approval process. So just based on the fact that we are so late in the season, we felt it's in the public's best interest that we just get some of that prep work or basically all of Phase 1 done this year and then do the resurfacing next year so we can minimize that impacted traffic. The county website will be updated by the end of the day today. I wanted you guys to hear this from me before we proceeded any further. I will also be reaching out to each of the cities that are impacted, St. Joe and White Park, and contacting several people who've been in touch with us on this project as well. But I did want to update the board and I don't know if there are any questions or concerns. It makes our workload a little bit bigger next year, but again, I think this is in the public's best interest.
Ms. Merrick?
Where is the starting point and ending point of this project?
Collegeville Road on the west end, which is basically where County Road 75, if you're westbound, turns into the freeway entrance ramp west of St. Joseph. And then it goes to 15th Avenue or our County Road 81 in White Park on the east end, right by the Martin Marietta pit, near the Parkwood 18 movie theater.
Parkwood, oh, okay, okay.
Any other questions?
Parkwood, okay, so that's... I'm just trying to orient myself. Okay, so you would be going past Fleet Farm, past the Parkwood?
And 15th Avenue is right at that intersection where Martin Marietta is on the south side of County Road 75.
Up to that signal line?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Landzweig?
Worst case, how much slack is there in the construction schedule for this project for this year? You gave us an estimated timeline and it sounded not optimistic, but, you know, these things have a way of sometimes getting delayed. And how late in the construction season could we go and still get this stuff done for this year?
The entire project or just Phase 1?
Yeah, Phase 1.
Phase 1, it's not any final wearing courses. It's very minor grading work. This work could all take place in September easily. So the project as a whole is three very full months of work, just with the traffic shifts and everything else. And we don't want to be doing concrete paving or the final botuminus wearing course on the portion that's botuminus at the end of October. As we're all aware, we can run into snow and we have other cold temperature issues then too.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jody.
My next item is another update. In April, I was asked, so I apologize for the length of time it took me to bring this back here. I did need to wait to get some information on the crash data. Our database is not quite up to date, what we readily have access to. And the state did recently give us some more information for 2016, 17, and 18. But I was asked for an update on the County Road 2 and Minnesota Street intersection in St. Joseph. That, the new County Road 2 bypass of St. Joseph opened up late in the fall of 2012. And as you're aware, we had some crash issues there with the left turns coming from Minnesota Street, so westbound up to that stop sign at the new County Road 2 alignment. And so we had a significant crash history there. So in the fall of 2014, we installed a rural intersection conflict warning system using federal highway safety dollars and that was funded 90% with that federal money. So before we installed the warning system, from the time the County Road 2 bypass opened to the time we put in the system, we had eight crashes, five of which were serious injury or fatal. Three of them were property damage only, so in that very short amount of time. So since 2014, we have had six reported crashes there. One of those was a rear-end crash, so it was difficult to tell if it could be attributed to that intersection or if the warning system could have done anything to prevent that. But those six that we had after we installed, so again, since the fall of 2014, four of those were property damage. One was a minor injury, one was a possible injury. So it certainly improved it. One of the best aspects of those warning systems is that it slows down the mainline traffic. So while you may still have decisions coming from that westbound stopped traffic where they pull out in front of traffic, generally speaking, when that warning system is activated, the mainline traffic slows down. It's a 55 mile an hour zone, being realistic. People may be traveling between 60 and 65 miles an hour. However, when the warning system is activated, generally speaking, that mainline traffic will slow down. So if there's going to be a crash, it's certainly going to be less serious than what it would have been otherwise. Again, it's not that we're crash-free at that intersection, but it has certainly improved it. As traffic volumes grow, we're going to need to continue to analyze that and see if we need to make different geometric improvements potentially. I know it's been floated that we should do a roundabout at that intersection. We should have a traffic signal. The traffic signal is not yet warranted. We can continue to analyze that intersection. We do continue to watch it. But I would say the warning system certainly did improve the condition we had out at that intersection. I don't know if there are any questions or anyone wants further information.
Any questions of Jody?
Thank you.
And I have no miscellaneous unless the board has anything for me.
I have nothing. Anyone?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jody. We're up to item G, Environmental Services. And we have Angie and Shelley here.
Good morning. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Angie Berg is here to go through our one and only item today.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
In front of you today is a Planning Commission action on a rezoning submitted by Jitta Properties of Avon, Minnesota. Recommended board action today is to either concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt their findings of fact to approve the rezoning. If the board agrees to hold their own public hearing and not concur, then we would look at scheduling that out in July. If the board does approve the rezoning, then we will bring back an ordinance for you to enact at a later time, likely at your next meeting. The Planning Commission considered this rezoning and held a public hearing on April 19th, 2018. And this is to rezone approximately 15 acres from the A40 zoning district into the residential 5 zoning district. The property is in Section 31 Holding Township, east of Timber Road, and it is near Two Rivers Lake. The action taken from the Planning Commission in April was voted 3 to 2. Leroy Gonringer, the chair abstained due to one of the members being absent. The Planning Commission established the findings of fact, which are listed in packet page 221 and 222. I won't read them unless the board would like me to. Commissioner Shpersky, I believe, was at that meeting, as was Shelley. I think there was some, both is consistent, isn't consistent. A lot of that you'll see in their proposed findings of fact. Holding Township did recommend approval of the rezoning and we did have a couple of issues that we needed to work with the property owner on in terms of compliance with deeding out of Lot 6 and of feedlot unregistration, both of which have been recorded. So the choices for the board today would be to concur with the Planning Commission's decision and you would be approving the rezoning, or would be to schedule your own public hearing.
Ms. Shpersky?
Yeah, I'd like to just weigh in on it. I will tell you what, there were compelling arguments on both sides. You know, we're looking at the rezoning and the potential reuse of, or use of, the future use of that property. But by the same token, the area residents have very many concerns about the water level in the area. And whether you say it's a drop in the bucket, it's still a drop. And they're at the point right now that water levels are a considerable issue there. My opinion would be we could take a look at it right now and make a judicious decision now, or we could set the public hearing and get more information and a full analysis of property. So.
Ms. Schnatch?
Just a question on the comment by Michael, he's a Marushian. He talks about this 50 acres, but this parcel is only 15, correct?
Correct.
Ms. Merrick, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm gonna, well, I have a question and a comment. I see on occasion where the chair will abstain. Does he have a conflict of interest or why is he abstaining and not, not voting one way or another?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, if I remember right, there was a member not present?
But that's not a reason for not voting, is it?
That'd be a tie vote, right?
Well, so, I mean, it doesn't...
Typically, it's the chair's discretion.
I can respond to that. And we, we've had discussion on that board about that issue. Being that they're not the deciding board, actually, I've encouraged the chair to make a decision because that also gives us his opinion. But the rationale was that they would have an odd number so that at least there would be a direction from the board. However, again, I reiterated and said that, you know, his, his input is important. He was selected for that board. So even coming to us at a 3-3 vote or a 2-2 vote gives us an idea where the board may be.
Okay, so there's no conflict of interest. It's just, just his decision, not the vote?
Yeah, and I will encourage him to participate.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move to set a public hearing at, at a time and date to be determined by staff.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, any discussion? Could I have some questions? I know there's some questions that have been talked about drainage. Have the, have the drainage direction issues been resolved as far as you're concerned? That people are calling about. I've had one, one person call.
Mr. Chair, the drainage concerns with construction, if their property was rezoned, would be, we would look at that at the plating standpoint. I would like to, to show you though, however, on the, the overhead, a couple of observations that I had. Jennifer printed this map out, I think because Commissioner Mergan had asked. So the area in orange is the floodplain. As we all know, there's significant floodplain near Two Rivers Lake. What I did also this morning is I overlaid the National Wetlands inventory with this. And the wetlands map basically encompasses almost the entire floodplain area. So my point is the area in the floodplain, if any of it would be filled, would be very minimal due to the fact that most of the wetland, most of the floodplain is also wetland. There wouldn't be likely a stormwater plan required for this size of a development because they're not exceeding over an acre of new impervious. That would all be determined, again, if the rezoning would be granted, then we would have to look at what their proposed number of lots are and whether or not that would trigger a stormwater plan.
This is currently zoned as agriculture.
Correct.
So how many houses could be built on here for rezoning went through?
On base density, you would have two more. And if it were to be a cluster development, then it could be a total of five, four more. But we have shared with the property owner that might be challenging on this property due to the amount of wetlands, which are yet to be delineated.
So you're anticipating two problems?
Two more, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So just so the board is, we're all on the same page of what we would be looking at or not looking at for drainage, you know, like...
Where's ditch 28 here?
North.
I'm not sure. We could come back with that.
It should be straight north.
And looking, I think...
I think it might be here.
Yeah.
I think it's for, you can't even see the start of it.
It's not on here?
You can't see it. It's way north. It's off of the picture.
You can get this by the time of the public hearing, I would think, can't you?
Certainly.
Okay. Ms. Shpersky?
Yeah, one other thing, there's some elevation challenges as well, correct? On the area that's being developed. So, I mean, it's, it's not like it's a flat property and you're gonna be able to put five homes in there. So again, there's some steep grades there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shpersky, there are significant elevation challenges throughout this area here. And as Angie indicated, there are wetlands in there as well. So we can bring the topos back so that you can see that elevation variation at the, at the public hearing. So we have more complete information for you.
Both the drainage and elevation issues.
Drainage and elevation.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we'd set a public hearing for this. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
And I have no miscellaneous items unless you have something for me.
Anyone? We will be taking a five-minute break. We will be taking a five-minute break. We're back from break. We are up to item H, which is the Sheriff's Department. And we have Bob Dickhouse here.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Lieutenant Bob Dickhouse here presenting on behalf of Sheriff Goodmanson and the Sheriff's Office in a request for funding to update our current 911 Viper phone system, which will allow us for text-to-911 capability and allow us to install call management software to help manage our day-to-day calls. I trust you had the opportunity to read through the executive summary that I prepared. So I'll try not to bore you to death with session-initiated protocols and call distribution strategies. So if you have any questions about those types of things, please share those with me. But I do want to give you a little bit of background of what got us here today. And as a, just a general history lesson, I guess, if nothing else. Our original phone system was replaced with a new Viper 911 system about six years ago, back in 2012. We did that after technology pretty much caused us to move forward and the fact that we were no longer able to purchase parts for the old system and had literally resulted to buying replacement parts on eBay. So it was really a necessity at that time to replace the system with more of a computer-based Viper system. At that time, we were looking forward into the future to make sure that we were text-to-911 compliant. We knew that that was on the horizon. We made sure that the technology that we purchased was ready for that. In about 2015, we actually were part of the State of Minnesota Pilot Project to make sure that the text-to-911 concept actually worked. We were able to share text messages back and forth with St. Louis County just as a proof of concept at that time. So we were a bit advanced and ahead of the curve on what was coming forward in the next-gen 911 and text-to-911 being the first part of that overall change. Since that time, we learned that the State of Minnesota had changed the rules on us for a bit. We were initially able to pass 911 calls or text-to-911 calls being partially SIP or session-initiated protocol, but learned later on that we would have to be fully SIP in order for us to receive and respond to text calls or text-911 calls. That was a bit of a surprise for us, but as I stated a bit earlier, the technology moves fast and sometimes we unfortunately can get ahead of ourselves, even though we were trying to be as compliant as we could. We found out that we were no longer able to, or our system was no longer able to support those calls. In 2017, we also had provided or had budgeted for funding to add call center software, also known as ACD, which really just is a way to manage incoming calls. Our priority in the dispatch center is always to answer the 911 calls first. They ring audibly, but so do all the other phone calls, all the non-emergency calls. So unfortunately, now, when those calls come in and if a 911 is ringing or, you know, one or two of those lines are busy, we tend to put all the other calls on hold. And there's really no way to, we shouldn't say no way, but what ends up happening is those calls get, you know, quickly put on hold, one after another, and then they have to be, you know, come back to later on. Oftentimes, people are not happy about that. So it's a bit of a challenge to answer all those calls in a timely manner. That kind of brings us to where we're at today. Currently, we're not able to answer text-to-911 calls. Those calls are answered by Malax County. And the State of Minnesota has asked that all the counties be able to answer their own text-to-911 calls by the end of 2018. So we're in a bit of a bind there. We want to be able to accommodate the calls. We are getting around an average of five of those, five text-to-911 calls a month. We'd like to handle those on our own and avoid having that third party, you know, manage those calls for us. As you probably recall, the text-to-911 message is out there. People know that it is capable, the system is capable of handling those calls, although it was kind of a soft announcement because the state knew that most counties weren't ready. So they, at the end of 2018 and '19, I suspect that there'll be another push to remind people that it is something that they can do if they need to, that is, call or send calls by 911. So we want to be prepared for that. The overall cost to replace our current Viper 911 phone system with the latest software to become fully SIP and be able to answer or manage our incoming calls through the ACD software is around $287,000. We've been working hard to make sure that those, that's a hard number, as close as we can get it. There was some other technology that had to be added on to make sure our recording system would also be able to handle the text-to-911 calls. And actually, they're not calls. They're, you know, digital messages. We wouldn't be able to log those as well. So there's some additional costs for that, but that's included in that overall price of $287,910. You know, I realize this is a little bit of an unusual time to request funding, but due to the nature of this type of critical infrastructure and the kind of the push from the State of Minnesota to make sure that we become compliant, we felt that it was important that we move forward as soon as possible to, and request the funding to upgrade our system so that it is compliant. I talked a little bit about in the executive summary about the E911 fund. We receive around $21,000 per month from the State of Minnesota, which is gathered from landline phones. Correct me, but I'm not sure if they're getting cellphone money yet. But basically, that money comes from the users as user fee. Those dollars come to us to support the 911 system, although $21,000 is a lot of money. Really, when it comes to the technology that, you know, is coming at us, it helps and it supports, but it doesn't cover all the costs. So some of these costs unfortunately have to be, you know, handled or managed through our own dollars. So that's where we're at today. Short but sweet, but basically requesting the funding to upgrade our system. If approved, we'd be able to move forward about 90 days from today or whenever it's approved to have it delivered, built and delivered, and about a month of training and installation. So that really puts us out to around September and October at this point. So if we push this off to January or February, that really just pushes us back into the, well, deep into next year and, you know, potentially another, close to another year of noncompliance. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, anything that I can answer in the executive summary.
Any questions? Commissioner Merrick?
I have a question for staff. How much money or do we have enough funds in the county's project fund? It looks like it's coming out of...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, the fund is currently at approximately $3 million. I'm not so sure, had we known that this was coming, that that's not where we would have recommended during the normal budget process to take it from anyway, because it is a pretty large expenditure and would have impacted the levy. If you remember, the 2018 budget includes a few appropriations from that fund already to start the comprehensive plan and a couple of other things, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Persky?
I'll tell you what, I appreciate, you know, having hard numbers. Like, you're looking at, you know, close to $290,000. And I'm sure you've done your work as far as where those costs are gonna be, and that's a good thing. Just my experience, having worked, you know, in the schools and in updating of technology and the changing of technology, I'm always concerned about us making that investment. And then no more than six months down the road, all of a sudden, there's a change and we're doing something again. And we can be proactive and maybe seeing that, okay, we're gonna change this, but we also see a need perhaps to change something else. Or we also see a, I'll say, a time that we say, maybe we should just hold on, wait a few more months, and move that forward. I know that's an obvious question, but I want to ask it. So I hope we've done our diligence as far as looking at potentially, you know, changes that are gonna make this obsolete or changes that could be enhanced even by adding additional purchases, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, we did speak with, you know, Quest and the people that are providing, or CenturyLink, rather, people that provide the software. We were assured by them that this is the latest and the greatest. Shouldn't be anything else coming. We also spoke with the State of Minnesota. Obviously, when we found out that we were noncompliant, which was a surprise to us, asked them if there's anything else that we have to expect or can expect. We were told no. We hope that this is good. This will set us up for the next, you know, five to eight years to be, you know, prepared for the next big thing in the next-gen 911, which potentially is video and other forms of media that will come in through 911. This is really what that's about, is being prepared not only for text-to-911, but again, the next step forward, so.
I appreciate your diligence, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Allen's there.
The 911 system is taken for granted, but every time, clearly, it's been demonstrated that it's impacted by regulatory changes, but it's also impacted by changes in technology. The original system was based on hardlines, hardline system. When cellphones came along, didn't show up on the call-in. Now the cellphone stuff has been accommodated. And then cellphones themselves evolved to where text message has got to be quite popular. And so there's another adoption there. And this is one of those damned if you do and damned if you don't type of a situation. You don't have to do this. Clearly, we have the budgetary approval to approve or not approve. But it's pretty challenging to argue against public safety. And so, yeah, it may very well happen that we'll approve this and folks like this will be back in front of us, you know, in 24 to 36 months with some more changes. But we gotta keep up.
Anyone else? Mr. Merrick?
I don't know how or if this ties in, but was that in any meeting of the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation? And there was, they were talking about this type of thing, about how... So the question they have, I guess, so if John Doe is in an apartment complex and someone from that complex calls 911, are you able to find out where that call came from? Sometimes there's some problems with connectivity. Is that addressed in this at all, or is that a different issue?
It is addressed, as one part of it is the fact that we're able, right now, we're not able to get caller ID due to the fact that we have kind of an in-house phone tree that helps us manage the calls to slow them down a little bit as they come in. 911 still come in in real time, but the other ones, we push them through a system of, basically a filter to make sure that they're getting the right person. Unfortunately, that takes the caller ID off, so we end up seeing just one number. This will reinstate the caller ID. But we are working with our mapping vendor, Geocom, to improve our locating ability.
That's what I was thinking about, yeah, okay.
The locating ability is going to be improved by the cellphone manufacturers. They have a feature installed in there that they're gonna be activating very soon. So right now, we get a general idea of where that call is. It'll be even plotted on the map. You know, let's say it's at Apollo High School. A lot of times, it'll plot that call at the mailbox, for example, just kind of in the parking lot. This new technology, this new software, which isn't, it kind of is part of this, but it plays through the 911 system, will give us the ability not only to find out which room that party is calling from or that person's calling from, but even potentially what floor they're on.
I see, okay.
So it's, we have to also have that map built in.
Okay.
But that's something we're working on here in St. Cloud with the community project.
Okay.
So we actually have a meeting on that tomorrow.
So it's a work in progress, kind of?
It is.
Okay.
And it requires some assistance from the device manufacturers. The landlines, we have a good idea. That comes in and tells us exactly where that call is coming from. As long as, like, say, for example, the school district puts it in there that it's, you know, room 231. Okay, we know it's on the second floor, room 231.
So the same, so the same system or technology, whatever words you want to use, would, you know, would, you know, if there's a rural area and John Doe is out in a rural area and there's nothing close by, you would be able to get, you know, to that individual with this new technology then? If there's 1,000 acres out there someplace and somebody was needing assistance in the middle of that, you'd be able to get to that individual with this new technology?
Yes, it'd be much quicker than it is today. Today, we have to, we can find them, then we have to rebid it and hopefully can triangulate. But yes, this gets us, it's the next step closer to finding, making sure not only your pizza can find you, but your, we can find you as well.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else? We have not had a motion on this yet. Is anyone wishing to make a motion?
I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. And you've indicated you have one miscellaneous item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, board members, one miscellaneous items, mostly by way of apology. Several meetings ago, I asked you to set a public hearing for today regarding a no-wake ordinance on Lake Coronas. It's actually in a portion of Lake Coronas that's fully in Meeker County, but since it's a border lake, we have to have a mere ordinance. Not being as familiar with the process for sending agenda items as I should be, I did not resubmit that item for the public hearing today, so it did not get into your packets. And I apologize for that. I will have to go through the process again to request that public hearing, and then we'll set that and we'll make sure we get it on your agenda for the next time then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from any of the board members?
Thank you.
Thank you. We are up to the final item, issues by commissioners. Commissioner Merrick?
Thank you. I received a notice, I think, some time ago from administration that a county newsletter was coming out. Is that still out there, or is that something that I didn't look at, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that was at the time when the fall newsletter was coming out. And I think at the time, you told me that you don't think you received it at your home.
No, I thought this was something that happened more recently. So there's not another newsletter coming at this time?
There's not.
Okay.
Not until spring.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to do, and, you know, sometimes we take these things for granted, but I, for one board member, appreciate the reports that we get from our county administrator. They are very helpful, good pieces of information. The SETS program that we talked about earlier, there was comments in there about Electrolux. And it gives us a little background on that, the affirmative action issue. Intergovernmental relations is one that I've championed over the years. So I appreciate that, reaching out to cities around the area. We have a new finance, a new finance of a reporting system coming. When is that first report gonna come out?
Commissioner, it should be out in, I would guess, in a couple of weeks. We're trying to do it quarterly, so the first one should be out. We had a draft that we've distributed because part of it is gonna be comments on the budget to actual report. So we want to make sure we're accurate with that. And so the first one is nearly done.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Persky?
Dwayne, I'll echo that. I appreciate updates, especially because, again, just getting into the county business and how involved we are, it always helps to have good information. And just a response also to the presentation for the money, the grant money for Electrolux, you know, that is a community problem, community issue. And the networking that we can do is gonna help those employees, is gonna help the area as far as, you know, revitalizing or redeveloping that. So, you know, any way we can make connections to people, even if, you know, the public just has suggestions, you know, let's get those on the table and, you know, move the process forward because it's something that, you know, is a negative that hopefully we can, you know, minimize the effect of the loss of all those jobs.
Mr. Knott?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just a reminder, we have the AMC District Five meeting next week. And then also, I want to give a shout out to the Breakfast on the Farm Committee. I know I was there and I seen Commissioner Mergon was there. You know, granted, it was kind of a drizzly rainy day on Saturday morning, but at the Extension Committee meeting yesterday, they mentioned over 1,600, you know, still attended. So there was a break in the rain probably from 8 to about 11. And it was a full farmyard. I mean, the buses were coming and going and people were having a good time. So it's a lot of work that group puts in. It's a lot of work. So hats off to them for taking the time and doing it so everyone can enjoy it.
Thank you. Yeah, I too did attend that and talked to the Bolts a little. Yeah, I too did, did attend that and talk to the Bolts a little bit, I've known them for a long time, it was, they were pretty happy with everything. Commissioner Lenzwey.
During the nine-one-one presentation, the, there was a brief reference to a firm called GeoCom. GeoCom's a St. Cloud-based company that has a national market, even international, they do some work for Department of Defense, and have set up nine-one-one systems at military bases around the world. But the history of GeoCom, GeoCom was started by an employee of Stearns County.
Charles Gruns.
And back, and back in the day, the nine-on-one systems were being mandated, and local units of government were really stumbling around on how to set it up, and one of the sheriff's office employees took the task on, got, got it going here locally, and was asked for other sheriff's department to help, and saw the market opportunities, set up a company, and thirty years later, they're honking right along, they're buying other companies and, and continuing to grow, so it's, Tom Gronus is a fellow that started this, beyond the fact that he had the history with Stearns County. I could spend the next, you know, half an hour explaining to you what a terrific county commissioner Tom Gronus has, but I'll spare you.
As a matter of fact, he was the civil defense director.
Yes, he was, yes, he was.
And at the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, I was struggling with that earlier where that was, but that's where the presentation was made on this mapping that we talked about.
Yeah.
And they actually were at the Super Bowl as well, and they had all types of mapping that they talked about, with, with their security system was, was pretty, pretty amazing.
Mike?
Nothing.
Seeing nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.
Good job, Jim.